Okay, well now convene the Mintern Town Council member, uh, council meeting, uh, at For No Breach of 2025. Uh, roll call, please.
Tanner.
Tom here.
Gusty here.
Brian here.
Dan here.
Eric here.
And there's two.
Uh, next, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, next I know on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything? Cool. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All second.
Motion by Gusty, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next we have approval of regulations. Do we have any revisions, amendments, anything? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Eric, second by Gusty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, uh, next is declaration of conflicts of interest. Does any member of the board have any, uh, conflict with, uh, the agenda items tonight? There are none, no one? Uh, next we have public comment. Uh, citizens are invited to come, uh, to address council on any issues I have in mind that's not on the agenda. You qualify. We just state your name and address and we're off and running.
Perfect. Hi, everybody. My name's Cam Patterson, uh, currently living down in Denver, but I've been exploring potentially starting a business in Mintern. Um, that would be a kind of a temporary sauna built in an airstream. So I've been working, uh, a little bit with Rob and Madison, exploring how this might happen, what it would look like. And, um, we've been looking at the, um, temporary business license code in Mintern that really at this point only covers food trucks. So I'd like to just, uh, explore, ask the council to explore further expanding the definition of what a temporary business could be beyond food trucks to just open up more possibilities for, you know, a business like mine to be able to, um, you know, apply for a permit and contribute to this wonderful community, guys, so. That is about it. And I guess, you know, Rob, Rob and Matt have been talking, but, um, just thought I'd come here and, and meet you all and, um, yeah, that's about it.
So just, so just as I told you, we wouldn't have the back and forth.
Yeah.
I just have one question. Are you going to residences for this service or your parking empty will come to you?
Yeah, I was hoping to, uh, park it, um, in station, you know, for, I guess, the temporary business use codes about six months. Right, um, and so, yeah, been exploring different locations and possibilities, uh, for where to do that, but it was be in one place for kind of six months. But I think the temporary business code allows, is a temp- a business that can be kind of removed within, I believe, twenty-four or forty-eight hours, um, which this would fit under.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and that you've already been talking to Madison and, uh, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's kind of been in the manager's report about us trying to get to work on some modifications to temporary business licensing. Um, because we were thinking about maybe having a pathway where the town could have kind of a simplified permit process for food trucks and other businesses, whether, when it's in right of way or on town-owned property or on property like that we lease from Union Pacific. Um, I just don't, we haven't really gotten started on a draft, but it's been something on my mind that we wanted to work on and bring to you.
I mean, I, I'd be interested if you, you have more experience in this than we do, but there's a whole suite of things I think the town could be doing in order to encourage business growth and I want to call it like a tryout or, you know, people testing businesses that don't involve signing a three-year, five thousand dollar a month commercial lease. Um, there's like tiny business parks, there's all sorts of things. So if there are things that other mountain towns are doing, um, that might make sense for us, I think not just looking at like only the temporary business license, it might be interesting to look at a whole suite of recommendations that we could kind of say like, yeah, that's right for us, no, that's not right for us, um, rather than try to dial in on one little tactic.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you all, appreciate it.
Alright, next we have, uh, council and committee reports. Um, Kate, uh, Diane?
Love me.
Diane, you got one?
I'd like to give a shout out for High Five Access Media. Um, right now Colorado Gives Day, or it's not Colorado Gives Day, Colorado Gives is actually open and they're one of the, um, beneficiaries of that. And, uh, I just, I'm on their board and I'd like to actually give them a really good plug because without them, our community wouldn't have this meeting being filmed, Vail Town Council, Avon Town Council, uh, a lot of the special districts, a lot of the school sports events, uh, they do training through CMC. I just feel they're a great organization. I am on their board. I have contributed, uh, the last two years, uh, because I believe in them and I know the rest of the board feels the same way. Uh, so if you find it in your heart, uh, for a donation, uh, Colorado Gives, they actually are listed on the website and it'd be much appreciated and much deserved. On the other thing I missed on there is they're having a little struggle because the franchise fees that was collected through like Comcast has been shrinking because of the, uh, uh, everybody streaming now and not paying for TVs. So it's taking away money from them, so they rely heavily on, on donations. Uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Gusty. Ryan, Jenny?
Um, I did get an update on the, the, I was nominated as our representative on what was called in the past the, you know, I'm going to get all of these acronyms and stuff, um, the Regional Wildlife Roundtable, um, that's being reformed, um, as part of Governor Polis' executive order and they're being called now Regional Partnership Initiatives. And there's money behind all of these, um, sort of planning and, uh, for project implementation once they get going. Um, I think there's seventeen of these partnerships around the state. Um, Eagle County is one of them. Um, as part of the reformation of this whole process, they're shrinking the original group to some specified members and we might not have a, um, ex officio seat as a, all towns might not have an ex officio seat. Sounds like there might be like one person that represents all towns. They're trying to shrink kind of the scope of this thing. Um, and then there's three committees that will be kind of like, one will focus on wildlife and one will focus on like equitable access and one will focus on recreation and, um, those will feed up into the, um, top committee. So there hasn't been a meeting yet since this all is kind of happening and it's gonna, basically, um, it's on us to kind of present this plan and it's a requirement to the state. Um, so that's going on from, um, at, at the level of, uh, um, kind of that top committee. So I haven't been involved in any of these meetings yet because they haven't had any. Um, but as soon as they kind of kick that off, present the plan, get it approved, um, there will be money for projects. I think there's a forty million dollar pot per year for these regional partnerships initiatives, regional partnership initiatives, and there's seventeen of them around the state. So if you do the math, like, there's, there's millions of dollars available for these things. Um, so that's what we're trying to kind of put together and I'll look forward to actually participating in some meetings and bringing some stuff back to council. Because I've just been asking over and over again when is the next meeting?
Cool. Thanks for doing that. Helen?
And, um, with respect to the Eagle River Fire, um, Prevention District, um, we've been working on a revised employee handbook and a potential collective bargaining agreement.
Just want to say thank you to everybody who got out to vote yesterday. Go America. It was a good day for America. I shouldn't say things like that. Okay, um, so I've got a couple of things. Uh, one, um, the SNAP funding was halted, uh, by the, by the big ugly bill. By the courts and the courts, but the courts ruled that they had to, had to be funded up to at least fifty percent. Uh, the president has stalled the court order and no funds have been released in Colorado at this time. The reason I bring this up is that we have Mintern citizens that rely on this funding. Uh, so I ask our citizens that can afford it to please donate to the Eagle Valley Community Foundation, who are the ones that work with SNAP, uh, locally. And, um, and they, they, it's, if you are going to donate, they'll always accept food and so forth, but, uh, it's, the, the best donation is, is when it's cash or, or, you know, check, whatever. Um, and you can go onto their website, which is eaglevalleycf.org and, uh, and make a donation. So, um, you know, not all of us are in a position to, to make donations, but if you can afford it, this would be very helpful to our citizens and Eagle County citizens as well. So like, I'd like to see what we could do there. Uh, and then also, uh, Vail has now, uh, going to police Vail Pass this winter. Uh, particularly watching truck traffic and making sure they're behaving themselves, but, uh, and they have the full capability of writing tickets and everything. So, uh, that's good news. So I'm hoping that will help us this coming winter. Um, I talked to Rob this morning. Um, I, Birch, I had, uh, Birch Baron, uh, who is, uh, our director, Eagle County Director of Emergencies, very good guy, very smart guy. He, he did a presentation at the CAS meeting and it just kind of reminded me, because we went through that whole process, uh, joining the, the, uh, the emergency plan for Eagle, Eagle County. But it doesn't seem to be really granular down to say exactly what steps they're doing in Mintern. Uh, but I think I talked to Rob about maybe sometime this winter to, to have Birch come out because he, he would definitely come over and give us that presentation that, that we gave, uh, that he gave the CAS and, um, and it basically reminded me, you know, you have to know what the evacuation plan is and whose responsibilities. So we have a fire on the south end moving north. Uh, what are the responsible, who, who's the local go-to guy? Which would probably be the town manager. I have no idea or if I'm ma- as mayor would need to, need to do anything. We need to know what staff, all of our staff's responsibilities would be as well as what, uh, all the council responsibilities would be. So I think if we can get him in here, then he can probably give us some more detail on that.
Would be good.
Yeah, it would. Um, I'd like to have, uh, just, uh, an email go out to all of our citizens or, or just, somebody they can hang on the wall. So if you get, get a call and all of a sudden fires on the south end of town, here's what you do. And, um, so forth. So anyway, that's all I got for today and we'll move on to the manager's report.
Um, I mean, I, I don't have any additional updates other than one small thing outside of the report. We've made some significant progress. I'm just trying to finish some projects. Um, I think I did put in here that we received the three bids for the conversion of the two-bedroom apartment. One of the employees that's starting next week for Public Works, we had two starting next week, um, whenever we get that done, we'll be hoping to take that when he, uh, lives over in, uh, Lake County right now. So, but it's been working in Avon, so doing the commute for a while. Any questions on the report or questions about anything that needs to be addressed by staff?
No questions?
Okay. Okay.
I like your pictures.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
I had to drive down to, uh, to the park to see, see that asphalt coming down. They're still working there though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think we're going to try to get me and Cindy working on the RFP for like a design build on the playground and then getting some communication back to Brian and Eric on that. Um, get that gear, get that ready before, uh, before spring. To get somebody on board. Um, we had some flags made that I talked about a while ago, just took a long time. I only have like a few, but we put them on the website and if people want one, they're only twenty-eight bucks. So we got pretty valued engineers. But I got, um, right now I just have the blue and the black and did like a, like a fun design, just taking the one that we have off the water tower. So if people want a flag, plenty of those.
Cool.
And we have it in black, um, white on black and then black on white. So it's a black flag. And then this blue one and then like a red colorized one, so.
And you can just pop over here?
Yeah, so let me show you. You can just let me know too if you want to wait till we get the other ones. Let me see if I can share this medicine. It's kind of running this. Thank you. Share this. So we can see, and this next one, they'll probably be a little bit nicer. This is a two ply, but they actually make a three ply where they fuse it, so it's kind of more durable. But then I was able to do that at the basically the same price. But there's a blue, the red, the black and white and the white and blacks. So, um, we should have the, the red and then the black flag with the white, probably first we get December. So if you want one, just let me know and we'll line it up. And then we put it on the left side if people want one. And if people want the sealed one, we could look into ordering that. Cindy's done orders on that one in the past. I think they were pretty pricey though. Uh, but we could maybe look at trying to bring the cost down on that one. So, yeah, something fun.
I had a question, yes. I had a question on that. It looked like the retaining wall, I haven't been down there in person, just trying to stay away from people sealed off construction sites.
Yeah.
Is, it looked like the retaining wall is lower than it was before. Is that right or is that just like a way the picture came out?
It is kind of, it does, it is a bit lower in height than the previous one and then they were able to kind of slope it. So it looks a lot less intimidating, even though we lost some space, but I thought it came out pretty well.
Yeah, it looks a lot less intimidating.
Yeah, it's not as, because I know we were kind of concerned about people jumping off and, and that, and we can still look into addressing that, but it, it seems like it's a little maybe safer than the one we had before.
It definitely looks that way, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it appears that way also because the road was raised a little bit higher, so.
With the fill, yeah.
Yeah, it looks really nice. The road is huge.
Yeah, that's, yeah, very good, lucky.
Do what we do.
Yeah, we'll help with getting equipment and things in there, but yeah, we, we've got our work cut out for us as far as getting the playground and kind of figuring out a game plan for that.
Yep.
Nice.
Anything, anything else?
Any thoughts of doing hats with the logo on it?
Yeah, um, I, it's kind of like when I have time and kind of done, we did some, we got Brandon to do a quote for us, for Public Works employees, because we're going to get them some new, uh, stuff. We got some, some new jackets ordered. Um, so I was thinking about, yeah, just doing a hat with the Mintern and then if people want to buy it, because obviously it's a lot cheaper the larger unit we run and we don't, we have such a small team that if we did a larger run and people wanted to buy it, kind of do some, so if you're interested, yeah, we could get that.
I'd be interested.
Because Red Cliff has this cool hat that Billy, I don't know if you guys see Billy in his hat, it's pretty cool. It's got the Red Cliff and it's that big, bold. Uh, I love that hat. So maybe something like that, that'd be fun.
Nice.
Yeah, we, I remember, uh, back in the eighties, I think we came out with a T-shirt that said, "Vail, Mintern's backyard." There's some, we could, we could really sell a lot of swag at the, uh, March and the summers.
Yeah, we'll see. And I was hoping that, you know, we'll take a, just a little bit of a margin to pay for the software and stuff we used to make it. Um, I kind of did it on the weekends, but, um, I was hoping we could use, if we, if we're able to sell a little bit, we could use some of that money for banners and things for Main Street, kind of fund some of that. Because that was kind of my hope for next year is we could get the streetlights. We actually did a, a walk, me, Scott and Madison, uh, yesterday or the day before with some reps from Hallifane. They do, um, street lighting and stuff like that. And one of the main hopes is we could have something for flags and banners, do things for holidays, kind of make it a little more community oriented on the street. So looking forward to it.
Alright, thanks. Just reminding me, what's the status of the lights on the water tank?
They're good. We got them hooked up, right? So electrical?
Yes, we got, uh, cords running down to, cords running down to William Street.
And, um, it's wired up now. Now we're just waiting for Cindy to get it, um, programmed to the phone and then she can.
Awesome. Somebody asked me, like, they don't have lights, so that's just.
Yeah, I was hoping I could go up there with Cindy and maybe she could show, uh, our Public Works team too, just so we have, because she, she's the only one that's been doing it. But so if the rest of us kind of know how to do it, we can get that set up.
Cool.
So that would be good.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, next we have, where am I? There's an economic development update from Cindy, I guess, or is that someone else I do it?
Cindy was, um, had an, had to go to a doctor emergency with her husband. Um, she did say it's more of a, an information item. And then she also said that they are looking at possibly changing up the, the schedule a little bit tighter because they do want to have this approved, if possible, by council by, before year end. Um, which is going, the last meeting is going to be December seventeenth, so. And because some silly problem like the, one of the planning commission meetings is the day before Thanksgiving, they might be canceling that meeting. So we might, I mean, we're getting to that point where we're at the end of the year and it's getting tighter. But if anybody's got any questions, I think I can probably answer, but for the most part, that's just a, um, a.
It's just a resolution, right?
It will be just a resolution. But we still need, um, planning commission, town council weigh in, staff is currently weighing in on it, um, and the DDA board is weighing in on it. There's been a ton of public comment on it when, throughout the creation of the DDA, everything. So we're, we're pretty out in the open on this one.
And the comments that you were receiving on it, positive?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move on. Uh, next we have, we have those special presentations, business items, uh, resolution number forty-four, series twenty-two-five, the CDOT Office System Bridge Grant. And you want to take this one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is our first attempt at getting some funding for the bridge replacement. We think our approximate cost is between five and six million dollars. I think we mentioned that, I think like the last meeting or before. This would only fund a portion. We would hope we could get a million or more, but we got to start looking at other options. Luckily, if we're aborted this grant, I think we still have four or five years to complete the project. So we're going to try to get this grant application in tomorrow. Deborah, from our Strategies DC, uh, grant consulting team, she thinks that we have a good opportunity to reach out for some congressional directed spending or to submit to Federal Transit Administration for, um, a road construction grant. They're very competitive. One of the key things we need is a cost benefit analysis done. Those usually cost fifteen to thirty thousand dollars, but we're talking with Jeff Spinel, town engineer, about the feasibility of getting one of those lined up. One of the things that's working to our favor is that because of the shutdown, what would have probably been a submission in the, you know, this month or before, has been postponed to an indefinite date. So it gives us time to prepare and potentially submit the bridge for a federal grant. Even if we aren't successful this first, I think we'll just keep going and keep resubmitting. And then me and Earl talked today about reaching out to our congressional partners and just say, hey, this is a, a really significant project cost that we're looking for help on. One of the key things too is we think we could, one of the recommendations from Deborah was extending the scope of the project to include repaving railroad avenue and also maybe improving the crossing and the area of the road that goes up to Taylor. Because maybe expanding the scope of the project could get us some additional funds and solve some of those longstanding issues that we, we, we weren't able to fund as part of the Taylor Street project. So hopefully I'll have an update for you in the next month or two on some other opportunities we're going to submit for.
Can we be creating motion for this?
Nope, needs to be in tomorrow. Alright, yes, we make a motion. We'll always approve going forward on the grant. Okay, so, uh, resolution number forty-four needs a motion? I make a motion to approve resolution number forty-four, series twenty-two-five, resolution of the town council of the town of Mintern, Colorado, authorizing the town manager to submit an application to the Colorado Department of Transportation for funding under the Office System Bridge Grant program for the replacement of the Vailen Bridge.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom, second by Gusty, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Alright. Thank you. You betcha. Next we have resolution number forty-five, series twenty-two-five, a resolution amending the Carte du Hanlon Town Attorney Agreement, including, to include water attorney services.
So as you are aware, or I think are aware, uh, the town's water attorney over the last five-ish or so years, her name is Susan Ryan. She recently became a district court judge, uh, sitting down in Glenwood Springs. And as such can no longer represent the town, uh, on its water matters.
Too bad.
It is, it is too bad. She was, she did a great job for the, for the town. Um, over the years, as, as part of my town attorney duties, I have participated in a lot of water-related meetings, uh, with Susan and before Susan, with Megan Winneker, uh, with our ongoing, uh, water rights engineer, Kristy Radabaugh, and have gained a fairly good understanding of how the, uh, town's water rights fit together, where the pressure points are and, uh, the strategy needed to implement, uh, effectuating the town's goals for limited growth and maintaining, uh, its robust water supplies. My practice historically has been about one-third water rights. It's one of the three pillars of what I do. My firm also, not just myself, but three or four other members of my firm, practice in the water rights arena. And so with, uh, Susan moving out of, uh, representing, uh, the town, we had an internal discussion about whether it made sense to transition that work to be under the same roof as the general town attorney work, uh, and, uh, or whether getting another attorney at Holland and Hart up to speed on the town's water rights portfolio, whether that was, uh, a wise decision. Uh, I would note there is another attorney at Holland and Hart, his name is Bill Kale. Bill has helped Susan, uh, on cases and in fact, he, uh, is finished, he will, well, under the proposal presented, he would finish up one outstanding water court case that probably is about sixty-five percent complete. And as opposed to changing horses midway through a case, we thought it would be good for him to, to get that finished up. But at this time, uh, the opportunity exists for the, the council to make a choice about, uh, who does your water rights work and, uh, where we're devoting resources to have that institutional knowledge in the future. I would be honored to be able to do that work, but certainly understand if the council has other thoughts that we, you know, could investigate and I would be a, a participant in helping to investigate other opportunities, so.
Let me just say, um, I've had a fair opportunity to have experience with our, um, water lawyers in past years. And, uh, I want to say that this is a, a great opportunity for us. And, um, I think we would be crazy not to accept, um, Mike's generous offer to be our water council. It's going to help us so much because A, he has the greater context and that's something that outside council, outside water council, uh, the Holland and Hart attorneys often, um, missed. Um, and he has, um, the necessary expertise. And I, I think this will result in us getting, um, both better representation and hopefully, um, significantly less expensive representation. Holland and Hart is a very expensive law firm and we've had lots of conflicts with them, um, because they're involved in so many other issues and represent so many other, um, players in the community. So I, um, strongly, um, I guess I'm advocating that we all, um, approve, um, the change in our legal, in our water council.
Thank you.
I feel the same way. I think Mike is the perfect fit for this and he's firm. Uh, he knows what's going on in Mintern, uh, has the knowledge of it. Uh, I think we'd be foolish if we did anything any different.
I didn't even know we were going to get to discussion. I figured just thumbs up.
I'll, I'll take more compliments.
And by, and by the way, I, I also believe that it, it's very unusual for a small town our size to have such highly competent legal representation as Mike provides and we're very lucky in that regard.
Okay, you can stop now. He didn't make this signal. He said this.
In general, is it normal for towns to have this all under one umbrella?
Uh, I would say it kind of depends. Uh, so for example, I represent the town of Silk where I do both their water rights work and their general legal counsel. Um, and then with, uh, other municipalities we represent, I would say it's about fifty-fifty where the firm does both the water and the general counsel work. And usually due to kind of historic representation arrangements, in some cases there is external water council. But it's, it is probably more common than not. How about that?
Yeah, and I, I talked with Mike, uh, a couple of days ago and, uh, just had some questions for him and, and he said that, uh, And he said that his current rate will not change. He'll just do the extra work at, at water. And he also has an associate, Danielle Skinner, who does a lot of water research. So, and she's even less expensive. So he can use her to do the, do the hard work and he just reviews it and it sounds like a genius.
I didn't see the percentage discount for using you for everything, was that right?
The bundle and save. Is that another thing?
We, we just heard about all the value added.
Okay, so anybody else want to compliment Mike before we?
Excellent blazer.
So all we need is, everybody raising hands wants Mike.
Well, my opinion went down for a second because when he walked in with that bottle, his handle, his hand was covering the cap. I thought you had a half empty bottle of bourbon.
Bourbon with me. I don't know, maybe that would make your opinion go up a little. I, I, I think, I think Jay prepared a resolution, so perhaps we could take a vote and pass the resolution and then we'll, we'll get moving.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-five, series twenty-two-five, a resolution amending the engagement agreement between Carmen New and Havel PC and the town of Mintern, Colorado to include water attorney services.
Motion by Gusty, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We don't have to spend tens of thousands of dollars getting a new water attorney up to speed.
Luckily, that, that knowledge is coming with me, so.
All right, next we have the fiscal year twenty-two-six budget, and you still don't have your money tie on. What the heck is going on with you, Jay? Okay, so Jay has me, he is always gives me a little script all the time. So I want to introduce the agenda item and announce that the public hearing is called to order for the purpose of discussion and comment on the fiscal year twenty-two-six proposed budget and gather input pro or con on the proposed Mintern Town Budget for the fiscal year January first through December thirty-first, twenty-two-six. Any citizen that would like to speak and needs to, they need to clearly state their name and fiscal address for the record from the podium or online. And, and that is it. So we're now opening the public hearing. Hands in the balance here. Anybody upstairs? Oh, okay. Nobody online?
We have a huge crowd.
No one online. No one's, oh, no one with their hand raised.
What was that?
No.
Nobody was hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So with that, I guess I'll close the public hearing.
I just have a couple of comments. I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
The reason I have a couple of comments is because this is one of the last times we'll have to take a stab at this one. And Brian had some questions at the last one, some others had. I just wanted to cover a couple of things I've done since we started this process, since I started it about April. But in the last few months, I revised the payroll budget. What I was doing is putting in kind of bulk numbers now that we've kind of toned it down to actual people. I can go ahead and fine tune that. So I've done that. So the worksheets and whatnot have been done. I'd like to point out also, and I did this at the last meeting, we've got about nineteen percent of the combined general enterprise fund budget is payroll. That's extremely low. High, high employee costs for some businesses, like school districts, they run, I heard one the other day near where I live, it's ninety-eight percent of their budget is payroll and ours is nineteen. Wages alone are just fourteen percent. The rest is the taxes, insurance, that kind of stuff. A big question that I had is why did the tax, the property tax grow this year? It's going to go up about a twenty percent top. There's a few reasons and I want to point out, one of the things that I'm extra really proud of, if that's actually a term to use, is we have not raised nor we ever asked to raise our mill levy. We've stayed at seventeen point nine-three-four mills. Essentially what that means is when the economy is doing well, we might have a little extra money. When it's not, we tighten our belt, right along with all the other citizens. We've never tried to camouflage it with other, you know, with special districts or anything like that. We just do it as the town. Over the last couple of years, we've had a pretty wild housing market. If you've looked at your property tax statements and the state legislative actions have resulted in random swings that have been up and down. And what this legislation has done is they've changed the, they assess the value of your house and then they take a percentage based on commercial or residential and that's where your tax comes from. Over the last few years, it's gone from about seventeen point one-five, excuse me, seven percent, seven point one-five percent, down to about six and a half percent roughly. When you're talking, you know, our property tax is about eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred thousand dollars. That's a huge, that's a huge hit when we go down almost a, you know, half a percent or, or whatnot. Twenty-two-five was an assessment year that would cause it to go up too. Twenty-three over twenty-two was a negative four percent growth. We actually went down in our property tax. Twenty-four over twenty-three was a thirty-three percent growth because twenty-three was a growth, was a reassessment year. And then over the past seven years, we've grown about twelve percent annually. And during those seven years, you know, we've, we've been pretty careful with our money. We've managed to put some aside and save it. And the property, and the twenty-two-five property tax revenue was eight hundred forty-six thousand dollars. In two thousand eight, it was four hundred fifty-five thousand. It's taken us seventeen years to essentially double our property tax. That's, that's really being careful with it, if you want to know the truth. And during that period, four years, we were actually below four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in collections. The, the downtown revenue, excuse me, the downtown development authority, we talked about this the last time, they get their money based on all of the district's mill levies that are within its own, within that district. So for example, with Mintern, we've got the cemetery district, we've got the Eagle River Water, the fire district, all of those, the levy, and they all contribute to the DDA in this case. However, in two, in twenty-six, we're looking at about two hundred and fifty dollars in property taxes that they'll get. The town has also, Gusty, you asked this one, that we're, we're looking at potentially backfilling up to fifteen thousand dollars a year for a couple of years until it can get on its feet. And you had said that you wanted to make sure that was only for projects. So that's one of the things, I made a caveat in it that that's where, what it would be spent on. And it'll also be spent with either council or manager discretion. So everybody's going to know what's going on. The traffic calming measures, we've got about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar line item budget for streets and sidewalks. We can use some of that to do that with. We also had a, Brian, we were talking at the last meeting about the parking, how do you, you know, parking signs and things like that. There's a parking sign that directs you to the municipal parking lot that's right in front of, as you come through the S turns, which probably is not the best place to put it because you're trying to turn, not, not read signs. But it points you right over there. A few years back, it was when Michelle was town manager, so it hasn't been that far back. But what we did is a kind of a study of, we tried to unify our part, our sign directional signage. So the sign going, that points you up to the town hall looks the same as the one that points you to the parking, which points you to the post office, things like that. It might be time to pull that study out, make sure that it, maybe it can be souped up, maybe we can redo it, whatever. But again, there's, there's potentially money that we've got already budgeted to do that. So it's not something we need to actually step on. After this, tonight, we will do the first reading of the ordinances on the, on the eleven-nineteen meeting, and then on twelve-three, we'll, we'll do the second reading. On, by November thirtieth, we will have the final assessed valuation. I've told you guys in previous years, I don't expect it to change very much. It rarely does. We haven't had the legislature to jump in or anything like that. So I don't think it's going to be a dramatic change, but it always does some because they're going through some of the hearings and whatnot.
What about with Mintern North? That ought to be an increase.
Mintern North, so what Mintern North is doing is that we get, they're assessed based on how complete the house is. So yes, we get, we've gotten quite a bit of money from that. But none of the houses were finished when they actually did the assessment. They were partially finished. The other thing is I am getting an early Christmas present, so I will be out for the week of December eighth. I'm getting a new knee, which will.
You're doing what?
A new knee. The intent is hopefully next summer I can ride my motorcycle, maybe I can go skiing a little bit more, little things like that, that, or maybe even just, you know, walk comfortably to the break room kind of thing. But with that said, I'll be doing some from home. I'll be running the payroll, that kind of thing, early a little bit. Won't distribute it, but we'll get it out early. I'll talk to you about that one. I just want you to know that I'm not, I'm not, this is the wrong time of the year to take it. I mean, I'm looking at month end quarters, annual, the audit, the, just the host of things, and then W-twos, ten ninety-nines. But it's going to be interesting. I'm kind of excited about it. It'll be interesting to walk without, and be able to walk. But I just want you to know that after about the eighth for a week, I'll be out. And I really paid attention when you got your hip done because I wanted to see what the damn, you know, what, what the pain was like. I think I'm going to be okay.
It's the best replacement we'll ever have.
It's the best, hundred percent.
I want to say a couple of things. One is to, we owe Jay a huge debt for doing such a responsible, conscientious job. And again, we're very lucky to have Jay as our town clerk and treasurer. But two is, I'm wondering if taking only one week off is realistic for your health. If, from what I know, from having many friends and relatives who've had this operation, you're pretty out of it for several weeks.
Yeah.
And so maybe we shouldn't plan.
Well, and that's, thank you. And that's why I'm not planning on being here on December nineteenth and that kind of thing. I, I'm a little worried about the time frame. And basically what I'm going to be doing is making sure that when I am working, that I'm not fighting pain with pills kind of thing and I'm getting the job done well and right the first time. So thank you though for, for. The other thing is, is that for two days of the week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'll be leaving about two just to go to physical therapy in Frisco.
Good. Because that's what, you know, my first, my first hip replacement. He says, now I wanted to need therapy. And it was like nine hours before I felt, started feeling comfortable. This last time, I said, I want physical therapy. So it was before and after. And it was like in two weeks I was up and walking.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we should plan for a little bit more pessimistically, just in the event that it does require you to take several weeks off, that we are covered.
It's the other thing.
He's not going to, he hasn't been listening to me, but maybe he'll listen to.
And then the other, this is, like I said, it's, there's no good time to do this, but I've got a son that gets married in early February. I've got a son. The other one is either going to be penned as a master chief in Norfolk, Virginia or in San Diego. I'm not exactly sure where nor when, so I'll be flying out somewhere. Hopefully the right direction when I do go, but it's going to be a busy winter.
Boy, you ought to be making a lot more money with a master chief.
Actually, right now he's not making any because of the shutdown, but they're doing, they're doing okay.
I thought they were paying the military.
Well, what's? They're paying a portion of it. You might know more if you are, if you're in, not active duty, but if you're in war zone, then you are getting paid. If you're a congressman or a senator or the president, you get paid. So, but the guy standing next to him in the, in the marine uniform might not be. So it'll be interesting.
Good luck with it, all Jay.
Thank you. This is going to be exciting. I'm wondering how it actually does go. Best laid plans.
I know who's had that procedure says, why didn't I have it done earlier? But not for a month or two afterwards.
I've been, yeah, I probably should have done this closer to twenty-five years ago, but now I know I need it, you know, don't spend any money until you're sure.
And just because we're going into the holiday season, the Trump administration announced they were going to lower the forty busiest airports.
Forty percent.
Customers, etc. And of course, we're planning on flying out Monday, so I'm hoping he doesn't lower the boom until we're in North Carolina. And if they, they don't and we fly, because we're thinking about, we might have to.
What are we talking about?
Okay, okay, okay. All right. But that is all I had to go. If anybody's got any questions again?
One, Jay?
Yeah.
Probably one of my little pet peeves, but daycare facility, I know I voted against it last year, but we're actually required, they're, they're required to supply us with five spots. And sometimes I'll walk by there. I'm lucky if I even see five kids. And I'd just like to see if there's any way they can kind of stand up to their agreement, because that was why we gave them the money, was that they were going to not pay for the five spots, but they would guarantee five residents of Mintern to be able to use daycare. I'd like to make sure that we're getting those five spots for our residents.
So I actually have written down in my little notes for tomorrow, I'm going to try to either go down there and get ahold of them and see if maybe we can get kind of an annual report and just see what they're doing.
That'd be great.
What we need. To your point though, the agreement that we have, it was a three-year agreement. It started last year. This is the middle. Next year's the end of it. So if we want to do it again, we would want to look at it. I also did find a fun one that I thought was fun. The post office, we signed an agreement in twenty-two, in two thousand. They renewed for a ten-year first renewal in ten. They did a second renewal in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, and they have another renewal that starts in twenty-twenty-six, of June, June of twenty-six, and it will go up about ten percent. Rob and I will start looking at that probably, we'll start, you know, they have to let us know that they either, that they don't want to do it, is basically what it says. So if we don't hear anything, I didn't change the budget because I didn't want, you know, I want money in the hand. And it's only, it goes up about seven thousand dollars, so half of that, you know, thirty-five hundred bucks wasn't going to make, make or break our budget, so. But that's another five years and more than likely in five years I won't be here. So that will be, that didn't sound right. I will be retired. I will, but I, what I do is I put that kind of information in my budget book, which the budget you guys get is, you know, half an inch. The budget I have is about four inches. And that's one of the sheets that will carry forward in each consecutive year from now on, just so that whenever I or whoever is doing it, they've got the notes to, to make it seamless.
Well, you mentioned that the, the budget would be in the packet or available.
It is online.
Okay, it is online.
Yeah. And it's on, and I, I thought we put it in the packet, but we didn't. I missed that. But it is online. It has not, normally what I do is I do not change it until after the December meeting. And the reason is because we would be changing it and just confusing. And so what I'm doing is I've got a changed copy and I know what the changes are. And once it's approved, and when I start working on the ordinances, I'll be using the modified that we've discussed, you know, and made changes to. So that when you do approve it, you'll be approving the final rendition.
I do have one question. Do we have a COLA built in for staff?
Yeah, we do.
Annual?
I'm sorry?
Annually?
We have, we have two pieces of that. We have a, an increase for, for COLA and for merit. And then we also have a, a bonus that is often given out at the end of November. And I don't know the exact page number, but it is at the very end of the general fund. fund portion, so it's like page forty-six or something like that. And it's, basically what I do, we're so small, it's real hard to say, every, you know, we're doing a five percent increase, because then everybody goes, oh, I get a five percent increase. Well, what that means is an average of five percent, and that might not be what it is this year, but it's an average of five. And the idea is, if we, if I put it in every department, it looks like everybody's getting it. This way, the town manager has the authority to, to divvy out as, as, as fits for the employees.
Got it.
But yes, we do.
Kind of on that note, I know years ago, you used to do holiday parties for the staff, and since I've been on, I know, you know, budgets have been tight, but we haven't ever done anything, you know, around the holidays. I don't know if that's something that'd be good to discuss, to see if, you know, put a small budget together to reward, you know, the staff for all their hard, hard work.
We can tie it in when Congress actually approves the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
That might be, that might be after holidays.
You'll never-
I've been working with Yellow Sticky, I always use from the-
Just, because if Michelle were here, she would say I was Scrooge anyway. But just to clear that up, we kind of do that, but it's more at the staff level. We, what you're referring to, we used to actually go out, we would go to the saloon, or we would go to where the crazy chicken is, was there before, things like that. And it just got to the point where it was pretty expensive, even for, you know, twenty, twenty-five people. And so we just, that did kind of fall away. I think it's-
We did have an event where we had a dinner for staff, and council brought-
Yeah, I think George, George kind of spearheaded that when they roasted the turkey and stuff, so.
Brought different-
And we're looking at doing that, yeah, we're looking at doing that more as a staff in this, in this room, but we, the council could, you know, we would invite you guys too, more likely. I mean, if-
I mean, if you guys, if you guys want to do, if, I mean, if you guys want to, want to do that, I have no problem with us putting it together. So it seems like a yes. We'll do it.
Do a five look.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom's good.
All right, thank you. There is no motion, there's no nothing tonight, just the public hearing closed, and we're ready.
Direction only.
Well, thanks again, Jay, you did bring up the budget every year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, how many, let's see, is it one more budget season you got, or is it-
I've been actually looking at that. For those that he's alluding to, I'm looking at June of twenty-eight, that I'll probably retire at. So I've got this one in twenty-seven, I'll do in twenty-eight, I'll probably be training or do something like that, but this is actually a lot of fun, it's, you know.
What are you trying to say about that?
I'm sorry.
Only words that would come out of the finance guy's mouth, so on that note.
A little trivia for you also, is that it's looking like we're gonna do away with the penny, and they're not gonna make it anymore after January, or in January, going forward, so if you've got your little piggy banks, keep the pennies, turn in the nickels and dimes.
Your grandchildren can cash it in later.
Walmart McDonald's is already rounded up or rounded down now.
Yeah, I've been looking at that too, it's-
So snow plowing?
Yes.
It's only, it's only for cash sales, though, so, and that's what the big stink is, is that when it rounds up or down, it's going to affect the people that most use cash, which are usually the lower income, so they're saying that it's, and I can see that, I mean, you know.
So, we have a snow plow, a snow plow plan next on the agenda.
Yep.
That's correct. We have our director of public works with us tonight, Mike, and we'll go to, go into that in the next nine of us, this is the discussion, so.
Okay, so, we're still gonna continue our, our priority route will still be the fire truck access and school bus routes. We're gonna do things a little bit differently in terms of, try to utilize every piece of equipment that we have and public works staff to keep the roads open during the week, so we're gonna run the loaders, we're gonna have a couple pickup trucks, and on top of shoveling the streets, town hall, and having a sidewalk machine on Main Street still. So, I think it's, one thing that we want to try to do is try to alleviate the weekend contract that we had in the past, and we're gonna try to do, consolidate that for Public Works. So, we're gonna rotate on-call schedule, and each employee will be on-call for a week and rotate, so whoever's on call will have to come in on the weekend and plow, and if it's gonna be heavy accumulations, we'll bring in two guys to plow for the weekend. And normally, like on Fridays and the weekends, we won't plow Main Street, but what, what we're gonna do this year is if, for heavy accumulations, we're gonna go ahead and open up the businesses on Main Street to try to keep the businesses open and have accessibility for the people to be able to make it to the businesses on Main Street on Fridays and on weekends, so.
And so, from the hiring point of view, you, we need one more or two more, where we have that, Mike?
We need one more. We have two coming on the tenth of November, and we're still looking for another operator.
The one operator that you have coming in on the tenth, he'll work the winter months and then do his other job in the summer, then come back in the winters.
Yes, yes, he's just, yeah, this is the first time that we've done this per se, is having someone seasonal, I think it'll be ideal.
I do too.
Yeah, for us, and he has experience, he did some work for Beaver Creek.
Senior resume, look.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it'll work out good for, for Mentor from the come on board. And now we're still in the process of finding one more operator, and so, we're hoping that we get another operator, and we can keep things moving efficiently and smoothly. And of course, it's been, it's been nice up until this point, so we'll see what the rest of the, rest of the winter holds for us.
It's coming.
Yes, yes.
It's good snow.
But it's worked out to our, our benefit for, for sure.
Timing's been good for you.
Yes, it really has been, it has been, so.
Were we pushing that final position, as a full-time, or take the seasonal?
I mean, we've had the seasonal posted, I mean, we would take it, it's just, it's been challenging. I mean, I guess just to share with council, because I don't know if I, we really have, we've interviewed a lot of people.
Yes.
I, I don't even know how many at this point, and we've had probably four or five offers that just were never returned. So it's been quite challenging to fill these positions. I think the housing has been key and critical, we have Grant in the three-bedroom now, and then two-bedroom, when we get it done, will be lined up. So I think that's gonna be important for the future of the town, is being able to provide the housing for staff. And it's, it's really been surprising to me, we, we're paying at the rate that our peers are, that are larger and have more money than us, and still, we struggle to get people that have any experience in public works or snow plow operations, so I think that we've, we've gotten, like, we, we're gonna find, we found the right people, and I'm confident we don't have a problem finding another, but it's been a bit more challenging than I thought it would be. So there's been that side of it, but I think, you know, I think we've wanted to find people that we think are the right fit, and that are gonna stay for the long term, and I, I think that we have that.
Yes, I, I believe so.
I think the other thing, we've been spending a lot of time with me, Mike, and Jay, is just thinking about equipment, and thinking about what we need in the future, and trying to do things a little bit differently, more efficiently, and gonna try to spend some time out there with Mike this winter, just to understand how it works, what they need, so that, you know, we're not, we're not wasting time doing things in an inefficient way. We're looking at getting another truck, you know, like a Chevy Silverado twenty-five-hundred with another plow, and then we're looking at options for like a heavy class eight truck that mostly would be used for moving snow around, you know, shuttling it from areas where we store it, up to like the lease slots, and we're just trying to figure out what the most cost-effective approach is gonna be, but we've been spending a lot of time doing that the last few weeks.
What's the state of the two heavy loaders, as far as future issues?
The, the class eight, like the full-size trucks?
The loaders.
Oh, the loaders. You just had somebody, you just had Cat come out, Wagner, right?
I did, yes, I had Wagner come out to service the equipment, and everything was good on the, the newer loader, the two thousand nine loader, it's at the beginning stages of the injection pump and injectors going out, but he said it'll last through the winter, so we're, we're hoping on, on it lasting through the winter, and then first thing in the spring, we'll get that, get that fixed. But so far, everything looks, looks good with our equipment. Our dump trucks, of course, are a little bit older, we've been going through them, trying to get them up to par for the winter, and that's one reason why we're looking at a class A dump truck. Another thing that we're looking at is automatic. A lot of the drivers these days are manual restricted, meaning that they can't float gears, they can't drive a, a manual, so automatic is, is, is the way to go, and so I think we're gonna start moving in that direction.
Or two, class eights are from the nineties, which is very old, for, for a local government. But, I mean, we, we've been able to do well with that, I think, you know, the town is, when, you know, when I look at it, like, we're well positioned financially, we've always been very conservative, and that's good, but I think we're, we're trying to be cautious for figuring out, how do we pull off getting some of this equipment up to the modern age at a reasonable price? So, we're, we're working on that, we'll come back to it when we, hopefully in the next few weeks with some options.
That'll help with retention and recruitment and all that, nobody likes to go work and have to deal with all that stuff.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great place to work, I mean, I've only been here since June, but I think it's been great, I think having Billy from Red Cliff has been really awesome, hopefully we'll be able to use him a little bit through the winter, we're still waiting to hear back on that, but that's gone really well. I think Grant, if you've ran into him, I think he's really happy to be here, so, and I, I think that's what's been frustrating about the hiring process, I'm like, once, if, once these people get here and are with us, I think they'll be like, oh, this is it.
Just keep Rebecca happy over at Red Cliff.
Melissa?
Melissa, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, moving on to Highlands.
Thanks, Mike.
Any questions for Mike?
Appreciate the work.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Good for you.
Mike.
Thanks for taking care of that turf, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome, yes. Looks good. Boy, just in time, we're going, amazing.
I gotta hand it to you guys, that, that looked like a lengthy agenda, you moved right along.
No, we're just making it that way, actually. We're lazy, we gotta get through these things, aren't we?
Skill on us.
Okay, so obviously, we're now at the Highlands parcel, part of the agenda, and so we're gonna kind of fine-tune everything and make decisions, you wanna take this, Rob?
Well, and I mean, the council had an executive session at the last meeting, and we heard from two different broker groups, had some conversations, no decisions or direction was provided to staff. And the interim staff have just kind of explored some things, working with the town engineer, just based on the conversations, but no concrete action, so I guess, what we were hoping for today was to just hear from you of what your thoughts were, where you would like us to go next, and just direction, so we can kind of get moving.
So I have a specific proposal for everyone about this. I think there are two different decisions that have to be made. One, which seems to me to be a decision we can make today, is in the event that we decide to sell this property, what broker we should hire, okay? And then the second part of that is whether or not we want to sell the property, and as to the latter, it seems to me that we need to have, or we should have, a open session, perhaps a work session, where we give plenty of notice and invite the public, and allow, and, and listen to what the public has to say before making that decision. But at that meeting, I think it would be helpful if we had a Pete and Brent and-
Lacy.
Lacy on board to help us explain to the public why they might want to sell this particular piece of property, and perhaps have someone else explain what a difference it would make for people's water bills, if we were able to sell this property and apply the proceeds to the new water treatment plant. So, that's my proposal.
Haven't we already done that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a public meeting probably three months ago on it.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in two different courts here, at this end of the table, where of the opinion, we already made that decision. The only issue that was brought up previously for that survey that I find invalid was to explain to the public what you just brought up, which is a comparative for those that are opposed to it, in regards to how else do you want to pay for the WTP? So the reality at this point is simply to choose the broker, proceed down the road, they've already put in their proposal, they've already stated what they feel they can get to it. From my end, what I would like to see is the milestones met, and if they aren't met, specifically what our timeline is based on what has yet come to pass, which is the loan, the bond, whatever mechanism of funding we get for the WTP, is if that property, if the winter time is primetime, but we realize that the reality is July, August, assuming that magic whale swims by, to get final resolution on the property, is if that doesn't happen, then what we are willing to do in regards to timeline, ninety days, hundred twenty days, whatever, that we have to revisit price, et cetera, and where we're willing to go at that point. But as far as public input is concerned, I mean, we had it, time is of the essence at this juncture, so I, while I, I have, I'm not against the public input again, that said, I just don't think we have a whole lot of time to quibble about this, and we need to get moving, and this property needs to get on the market. And the other issues that Rob and, and crew have already brought up in regards to the road and other access issues that need to be taken care of preliminarily to make the property accessible, is where we need to be moving next. So, that's my two cents on it.
I agree with Tom, actually, we'd already asked for the public comment, and the public comment we got was they, you know, wanted them to be able to have a wildlife corridor there, and we've talked about that, with having, you know, one or two units up there where it doesn't affect it, and the wildlife still has their access through there. I feel that we really should get moving on it too, because this is the money we're gonna be using to be paying for the water treatment plant, the longer we keep kicking this can down the road, the less chance we have of selling it, so, you know, I'm in favor of moving quickly on it, as far as getting it listed and choosing a realtor and getting the road, maybe where we can have access up there to drive up so people could see it.
I, I, I would note that the property currently sits in a holding zone. We, we did that intentionally when the trade, or the acquisition from Battle Mountain occurred, and so, I would think, as any purchase of a property during the due diligence period, that a prospective purchaser is going to ask us to zone the property in a certain manner. That zoning process is going to be a public process, there will be a public hearing, there'll be two public hearings, there will be a planning commission meeting, there will be, there will be some additional opportunities for the public to provide input on the future use up there.
Your recommendation on that is like, to try to find a buyer then, and then do the zoning though, isn't it, to try to fit what the buyers wanted to put on it?
I think once we select a broker, I think having the broker provide some input as to what they think is going to make this more market competitive is important, but someone paying top dollar probably is going to want to ensure that their vision for the property is regulatorily permissible, so we may be, even if we were to zone it now, we probably would be doing some kind of amendment later, would be my, my guess.
To the point, though, would be a concurrent effort between getting it on the market and going through that process, not sequentially.
And so, so with, I got a question for y'all. And so, so with um, I got a question for y'all, um, when at point, uh, when do we do how do you usually see it as far as like geotactical, is in my mind, make sure we, we know we have water, I know we have water, but they, you know, they're gonna wanna see that, I'm assuming. Uh, how does that work? Do do you get the guy first, or do they generally just say, okay, I gotta see all the stuff? So would it, you know, would it speed things up if we were to do it before the snow flies, or what, what would work?
Good question, I wanted to yield this one.
Yeah, you guys want us at the microphone for it?
At the microphone?
Us.
Name, address, sorry.
Yeah.
Let me make one more comment before you get started, cuz I I think this is really important. Um, based on the comments that I heard, I don't see that, I'd see support for conservation, but I don't see the commitment to s- that to sell it as a private ranch yet. Um, I think we can get that from the community, and I think we can get that from the community without delaying the sale. Because it's gonna take you guys, and you can address this, a while, you said you had to do some more research anyway to um before you commit into a particular price to put the property um for sale at, so that's going to take some time. Um, we need to make some preparations for a road anyway. And I think we could have that public meeting um next month, it could just be a work session. But we just give them notice, we get a buy-in from the public, um, are are not. And we could do it really quickly, I think, without the actually delaying at all, when the property is actually going to be put for sale. And um, I feel really strongly that's what we should do, based on um the public comment today.
And to to that point, as Mike denoted, that would occur during the zoning process, so two birds, one stone, I, you're getting that, you're getting that meeting in a, in a formal manner, in a public hearing documented as opposed to the work session, so I don't, I guess I'm missing the point is the why.
Because zoning isn't the same thing as making the decision to sell the property, and I think we should, it behooves us to get all the voters that have residents and intern behind us on this issue. And it's not going to significantly delay this getting it listed. And I think if we um uh skip these kinds of formalities, um it's going to make residents feel like they're not really being listened to.
I I disagree, um, we have, I I've been trying to avoid any delays all year, just to make sure we can get to where we are now. If we, any, even even if it's just a month, that's a month we're behind. Uh, they have indicated that they have clients that would happily want to see the property.
Recording stopped.
Best time to do that. Did we stop?
After we started her computer froze.
Oh.
Um, anyway, assuming we're still online with high fiving, okay, um.
Recording in progress.
They, they, um, they had told us that the best time to do this is from December on. And and have it set up so they can get up to the property and see what they wanna do, cuz all of the 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 people that that they think they can move the property with is gonna happen this winter. Um, and there's no, uh, we're, as our attorney says, if we wait and zone it the way the buyer wants it to zone, that's gonna create the hearings. And this is before he's ever, you know, I don't know the process, what you go through, but but bottom line is there's gonna be public hearings and planning and zoning, and there's gonna be public hearings in in front of us. And to delay this process uh for no reason doesn't make sense to me. We meant, and and everybody knows, you know, that the Highlands property was a way of lowering our our citizens' cost. And quite frankly, I know that the people that have been in this town long enough uh, for 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 a long time don't, don't think they can afford to live here. And I think this is incredibly important, because if we don't get these things moving and we don't get this uh more funding on our water treatment plant, then that that's gonna be a hard thing on on people that we don't wanna lose.
I would, I'd like to point out too that we still have not had an offer for a conservation purchase or anything, so that that could still come in, we could still get an offer from U County Land Trust or some combination. Somebody looking at the parcel and wanting to put part of it in conservation for tax purposes, there's a lot of things that could still happen. And so I don't think listing a property is the same as approving a sale, I think, or approving anything, really.
Yeah.
They could come in with a ten, that ten million dollar offer to put it in, we, I don't, we didn't have to discuss how we compensate that for.
Are you saying that you, they can make, let's say we listed it for um fifteen million dollars, and then somebody offered fifteen million and no conditions, and we said no, that we would be within our rights to do that?
Sure.
Abs- yeah, and I'm looking at, Mike is the local attorney, uh, if a contract is written, it's up to the seller to either sign it or not sign it. So.
Well, that's the answer.
Right, Mike?
There could be an offer for putting these in for five million, and then a fifty million dollar offer, and then we have the hearing, let's say, where number we wanna choose.
Maybe that, maybe that's the answer, um, that we go ahead with this, but we put out all the information um, um, to the public and let them express whatever concerns they have, um, while this is proceeding.
I know all the people I've talked to, they've all kind of been questioning, why are they gonna sell that Highlands, you know, you got the water plant coming up, it seems like they all know that's what that money's gonna be used for.
Well, Mike, are we out of order?
There have been two ranges of of offers, you know, one range, if really, I don't think there's much controversy. At the other range, I think there would be a regular controversy.
Yeah, depending what was on it, you know, I I don't think there'd be that much even if we had like one parcel on each one or one unit, I don't see there'd be that much controversy.
I don't mean that, I mean, you know, if we're to sell for a very small amount versus a large amount.
Oh, yeah. No, I I can see that.
Those are all facts and things that will unfold in the process, for tonight's purposes, the whole point is to get direction and guidance. My input as far as direction and guidance is to pass to Slyper to start to proceed with the entire process. The pieces that we need to get done in the town, which includes the cost estimates to allow the property to be accessible. And last but not least is the zoning process, and all of these other things can be talked about in those processes.
And I think one thing we should look at is that road, did Tim ever get back with us where the access were? We we should try to see if we could get some sort of temporary road just cut in there, where you could drive up there with a vehicle or snow flies go up on a snowmobile or something, just to show the property.
That's what I'm talking about, so there's there's three pieces of this tonight, cuz there's more than that.
I'm gonna second Tom's uh recommendation to go with Slyper.
We have them here and ask them questions, if you need clarification on their process, and and that's why I have Brent standing here for the last ten minutes.
It's hard.
So, Brent, what's the, what what do y'all usually do when you sell a property like this, and there, uh, what's, what what are the things the town needs to do?
So, the geotechnical part, that's where I think your question first started. So, a lot of times for geotechnical portions, people have a soils test done closer um to where a home or a building is ultimately gonna be built. Because if you take soil conditions way over there, and and you're building a house over there, those soil conditions are, they're not the same. So, I don't think it's necessary for the town initially to go in and do a soils report, because ultimately you don't know where to do it exactly. When it comes to water, and Mike alluded to this la- in the last meeting, the executive session, that we believe there is water there, um, like in all likelihood, like I have very little doubt there is water. Um, and I don't know that you need to drill a well, because again, you don't know where an ult- an ultimate home or residence is gonna be, and granted, from a well to a house, it can be piped and pumped, and that's not a problem. But historically, what we'll see on vacant land is that uh the potential buyer will step up to the plate, they'll identify where they effectively want a building, and then they'll get a well driller there to, to drill a well.
We do have, I came across them, we do have a lot of maps that, and work that was done with Battle, North Battle Mountain, about sampling and site work that I just came across this week, so I was gonna kind of dig into that. It shows specifically where things were sampled, where there's arsenic, where there's lead, whatever, and there was many sample sites on the Highlands, none of which came back with any significant findings, but there's probably additional stuff on water that we can look into that is just in files.
They're absolutely, as Mike can attest to, cuz you're a water attorney, effectively. The state of Colorado has an amazing resource of, like, we can pull into it, create a spreadsheet effectively, and look at all the nearby wells from, from depth, we couldn't necessarily get water quality, cuz that's, it's not recorded in the state, would you agree with that, Mike? Um, water quality isn't.
Uh, no, but i- in this area, there's, because of the down gradient uh environmental situation, there's a lot of test wells and water data and stuff.
Exactly, a- and all that is public information, whether it was.
Yeah, and and I I would think once we select a broker and we get them under contract, that we would be putting some kind of data bank of uh due diligence information together that could be used for marketing and.
Absolutely, and that's part of what we do, like, we'll go in and do that, we wouldn't rely on a water attorney necessarily. Double checking our work, great, absolutely, love it, but um, yeah, we would do the heavy lifting initially.
Yes, what if we put some restrictions on the parcels to say, we would like to have you run your access road up once a boundary line, say, on the south side. And 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 fit your, your building envelope, uh, whether they have outside buildings as well, whatever you wanna do, is kind of centralize them and leave, that would leave more open land for for elk habitat and that kind of thing.
Yeah, creating guardrails, I think is always generally good and and safe. Brian, you asked this question last time too, like, could a buyer potentially want to do, take part of it and put it into a conservation estimate? Um, without a doubt, that would be part of our conversation with a, a potential buyer too, but I think creating a certain amount of guardrails, like this is ideally where access is, or what zoning potentially is. It's, I think it's better to have guardrails than to be like, yeah, carte blanche, it's whatever, you're gonna pay fifteen million and you can do whatever you want, cuz that's not the case.
And I would think fencing would be a part of that as well, just um.
You don't want fencing, that that restricts the fencing law out.
Exactly. Exactly, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The, the lack of, the lack of fencing would be an issue.
Well, you don't want, you you can fence off your property as a law, but you gotta have the elk being able to.
You wanna restrict what? Exactly, so you wanna restrict how, what can be fenced.
Okay.
So, that gets a little bit tricky in the sense, like in Eagle County, um, if a property has agricultural status, a lot of times people are gonna fence, they need to fence to keep cows in or out. Um, so I'd, I'd just, I would be a little bit careful of saying, again, carte blanche, no fencing or yes fencing. Kind of depends on what the property is ultimately gonna be used for. Like, like you would wanna fence in your house or your residence to keep the cows out, but then you would also need to potentially fence further out around the property, keep the cows in.
Well, I I doubt that they're going to be, um, that this is going to be a cattle ranch, uh, and um
Are the same.
I I, there, there is, there are wildlife crossing issues.
Yeah.
And, um.
But I think that, I can all be addressed probably at a higher, and Mike, I keep on looking at you, at a higher zoning, um.
I mean, that's gotta wait till you get your prospect first to find out what he wants, and then we can deal with it as it comes, cuz we're getting ahead of ourselves, I think, right now.
Right.
Uh, so.
Can I answer a question? Well enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions for the board? Um, would like to get a uh negotiating entity to talk, you know, we need to talk about, you know, commission structures, how y'all do that and so forth, so I I'd certainly want to get direction from the board tonight to select this group.
All right, I I think that the materials that uh both realtor groups presented had, had information about commission structures and and those types of things in them. But I I think at this stage, y- y- we, staff is asking that you, you give us direction as to which of the two brokerage firms that we interviewed, you would like us to pursue a listing agreement with. Uh, we will then, over the next two weeks, before your next council meeting, we will work to have uh a listing agreement hammered out with the group you choose. And we will then bring that back to you for uh your final approval. And that will then, I'll have a cover memo that outlines kind of the deal terms as part of the listing.
I, just one thing as part of that, I think we should address, um, given that the compensation is based on a percentage, like I can't think of the examples that this would happen, but like, say a conservation group comes in and offers something, or some grant comes out of nowhere and pays to put this in a conservation easement or something, and how do we, you know, they're gonna put hard costs into m- marketing, advertising by this agreement, like, how do we, you know, make sure that they're taken care of in any direction this thing
So, pri- prior to us sending out the RFP for services on this, uh, the town engaged in substantive discussions with Eagle Valley Land Trust, with Eagle County, and with the Division of Wildlife. Um, we likely will, as part of our work on a listing agreement, have some kind of carve out or partial carve out around those three entities that tries to achieve a level of fairness that you're getting at, which is we're incentivizing them to go out and invest and market this property, but we have had some preliminary discussions, and if they were to come to fruition, maybe there's a bit of an adjustment with those three entities that we would work on.
I'd like to give direction to move forward with Slyper Smith and Frampton as our listing broker for the property.
Thank you, okay, uh.
I'll second that, if you need a second.
I just wanted to add a direction, so, here's one more important, so I should just frame it up?
Well, also, based on time, there's two other things that need to happen concurrently, and that is the road, the gate, the plow, we've already talked about that in previous meeting. And also a timeline in regards to zoning for this property, cuz obviously there are other future topics. So we need to have a general idea of what we're looking at.
And do we chase down the Forest Service too, as part of that?
Absolutely. The road, the gate, and plowing.
Forest what?
Yeah, no, LeAnn's still working.
We are the Forest Service.
I didn't say the road, the gate, the plow, it all happened at midnight hour.
So, the town engineer has explored and worked with um Tim McGuire from Battle North and Mike Sawyer here on determining where we can do the access road, he has some options for that, he has some ideas about cost. We're definitely gonna be over our twenty thousand dollar limit, so we'd probably have to go out to like a public bid for that. So I will try to, at the next meeting, bring some clarity, maybe we can bring, I'll probably just bring Jeff here to talk to you and say, look, this is kind of what we're thinking as far as cost, and then maybe coordinating with um the firm to determine like what is the minimal acceptable as far as an access road, so the town's not putting in more than it has to. But I'll try to bring back some clarity on that, uh, I will try to reach back out to the Forest Service on access during the winter time and how we would deal with that. Any, what other item?
You mean as far as?
The gates up farther and it needs to be moved back, if they could put it back at the bottom of the road, where it went up to the one set at the beginning of the road.
Basically, access to that gate, cuz you.
Yeah, or get a key to it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the
Good luck.
The zoning piece.
Not gonna get anybody.
As far as.
I know who has the key. I know where he lives. I could get a key. I can. Good.
Okay, we'll follow up on the zoning piece then.
Brett said he could get a key himself.
Okay.
Timelines, we all got it in our brain as a group.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, can I add one more to your list?
Absolutely.
Survey. Um, I think it was on the agenda too.
Oh, and Jeff started moving on that as well. We have the topographic information and overlay. He's been compiling some of that. So I, we did get that moving.
So what's your usual process moving forward after, you know, contracts are signed and everything like that? And and a timeline that you, I know this is a bad ask, but a timeline that you would say is got a good chance of closing on a deal?
Well, and even before that, what's your timeline, giving us a price to list it at?
So again, we 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 have some materials around that, that were discussed in executive session. And those will work their way into the listing agreement that we bring back to you for the for your review. And I would say as to the timing, inevitably it is going to depend on the buyer and how much due diligence they want to do. But again, unless if we go in and begin the zoning process now, I have a hard time believing anybody is going to put millions of dollars into a property until there is zoning on it. And so just so that you're aware, that might be a comp plan amendment and a zoning ordinance, and I think you should be budgeting at least four to five months to get through that.
So I I'm thinking to be realistic, there's no way that we're likely actually get the dollars in our pocket prior to at least a year from now. Am I correct? Given that we have to go through all the zoning stuff and all of that.
Nobody knows. Nobody knows. This is just, this is just.
Depends on the buyers.
Well, I think.
Even even if they come in with cash tomorrow, there's still a whole lot of steps that would have to be.
Yes, but but right now to ask for a timeline is just hip shooting. This is.
Right. All I'm saying is there's going to be some significant time
noted.
that this is going to take no matter what. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But I think everybody and Mike, everybody sort of alluded to that, everybody's gonna be running a simultaneous path to get a bunch of stuff done so that when the buyer does come, we really do have the best information and access and a survey and an idea to explain to them how to deal with zoning and what can be built. And if it's zoned, it could be a special use permit. There's there's different ways to. You're not locking yourself into something if you say, hey, it's zoned X. There's there's ways to work with X, to add X plus.
Deal's not done till the deal's done. So we just need to get moving.
Okay. Any other questions? None. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I I'm gonna ask, we take about a five minute break. I'd like to have a quick follow up discussion on what we just did so that I get a few things in motion and then we can reconvene for the remainder of the agenda.
Take a recess, five minutes. We're back in session. And next we have the update regarding nuisance prosecution of the Mintern Cemetery District.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As members of council will remember, we have had in this chambers on a couple of occasions, a number of very concerned citizens after sad events happened up at the Mintern Cemetery where deer, elk and moose have been impaled and and ultimately died on the spikes that are on, or at least were in part on the fence at the cemetery. After the last of those events, which happened back in twenty twenty-three, when a bull moose was impaled, the Michelle Matier and I, we decided with some direction from council that we needed to act on this. And we began the process of a nuisance case against the cemetery district. As part of that, the town updated its nuisance code to broaden the definition of nuisance to include offenses against wildlife. And the town sent required letters to the cemetery district requesting that they voluntarily comply and abate the nuisance. Those are requirements under your code. This last summer, we asked the town's code enforcement officer, Kevin Rindi, to go up and do a follow up inspection. In the packet of information presented to you is his updated report. He details that for a meaningful portion of the the pre-existing fence, the cemetery district has gone through and has cut off the the spikes and capped them. I don't know that we know the exact percentage, but there's still a meaningful percentage of the fence that that has the spikes and that could potentially continue to pose harm to wildlife. So in follow up on Kevin's report, we sent out a supplemental nuisance abatement letter to the cemetery district, again, asking them to abate the full nuisance. We also prepared a draft complaint of what potentially could be filed in Mintern Municipal Court. The cemetery district responded by saying that they weren't going to fully abate the nuisance, but if the town wanted to, the town could pay for it. In consultation with Rob, you know, we identified that we have certain in-house capacity to potentially do some of the work on the fence. We also know that there are some crafts people, trades people in town that feel very passionately about wildlife, who would be willing to volunteer their time. And so we sent back a a settlement proposal to the to the district that the town would come in and and would undertake to remove the spikes if the cemetery district would then in exchange be responsible for capping them and, you know, maintaining the integrity of the fence after it had been modified. The cemetery district sent us back a letter essentially saying, if we want the the spikes removed, we can pay for them, the town can. In the past, the cemetery district has argued that the town somehow approved that fence. They did an open records request last year asking for information and town staff spent a lot of time combing our records, trying to find anything related to a fence at the cemetery that that the town may have had an approval. Part in, we were unable to find anything. The cemetery district has not provided any evidence to that effect. And so we don't see this as a situation where the town somehow gave an approval to the cemetery district to build a fence that kills wildlife. Instead, it is a situation where the cemetery district is maintaining a structure that does kill wildlife and it has been partially abated. That's great. But really, the the standard in the code is full abatement. And so we wanted to provide, you know, the council with an update, answer any questions that we can answer about this. And Rob and I will then be plotting kind of next steps about seeking compliance with this. It does seem kind of interesting, you know, the cemetery district, again, they they estimated that the cost of cutting off the remaining spikes and capping the fence would be about thirty-five thousand dollars. In the operating budget of the town, that's a a meaningful amount of money. It would mean cuts. I'm assuming Jade, some other important thing that the town funds. I'm no expert in the cemetery district's finances, but it appears they're sitting on a substantial pile of money. And so it seems odd that the district wants the town to pay to remediate a nuisance that they created. So we're happy to answer any questions. We are open to gathering additional information and bringing that back if council has additional information they'd like to consider.
So they weren't willing to accept our offer to take care of the spikes on the fence for free?
We had, we had essentially, I think, suggested what what might call partnership, where the town would come in and do part of the work and then the cemetery district would do part of the work. But the, to try and show a a joint interest in resolving this problem and helping wildlife, that the town was willing to be a part of that solution.
And their response was?
You can pay the whole thing.
Right. So my question, one, who is currently the president of their board?
This is a good question. John Sheham was the last person who came in. Whether he remains the board chairperson, I'm I'm not sure.
So regardless, as you noted, which I greatly appreciate mining out all the minutes and so forth, it was clearly stated by him in this chamber on fifteenth February twenty twenty-three, that they would work to modify the fence to alleviate any further animal concerns and expressed it as the top of their to do list and the work would be completed in spring of twenty-three. We are well past spring of twenty-three. And thank you for us bringing it up, per their Open Records Act request, the only thing they keep hanging their hat on is that you approve the fence, of which there seems to be no group for that whatsoever. And irrelevant because the president of the board said, we got it. So I guess my question back to the cemetery is, so your word means what?
Nothing.
Do we, you you asked about the president of the board too, like, do we know who the board members are who are making these decisions?
Arjavez is on the board and they are now taking applications for board members.
Oh, that's interesting. I mean, the cemetery is obviously an important part of the community, but they need to be part of the community and it seems like they're not acting.
And then the the board is appointed by.
By county commissioners.
Right. And so I.
So all the seats are up? When are they up?
They have a three person board and they got two board members right now. And so they need to appoint another one.
And when are the terms? Do we know anything about the terms or when? Because we could just have a discussion with the county commissioners who are.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
We should maybe.
Care about wildlife.
And just.
Why don't we find that out? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, I think there's, that's an opportunity.
I mean, it seems like it would be good to have people on that board who are part of the community and share our values of, you know, wildlife protection and, you know, want to partner. That seems like a crazy thing to turn down, offering partnerships.
We offered it, did it for nothing and some of the volunteers and public works and.
Well, we have town council members on all kinds of boards. What's wrong with this one?
What, do we know exactly what the reserves is? What cash reserve there? I mean, it's not large. Is that publicly available?
The, I was unable to find a twenty twenty-five budget online. The one that I found, I think, was either from twenty-three or twenty-four and to the degree I am reading it correct, it appeared that it was over two million dollars.
Every citizen of Mintern with, through property taxes funds. This.
Well, it's not just Mintern. It's it's like the whole whole county, the whole state of of Eagle County, yeah.
Okay.
That's why they're so well funded, yeah.
Wow. They have more funding than we have the town do, all those new cash reserves.
I'm thinking, I don't know what the deadline is for this third person to be appointed. But assuming it's not immediate, I think we should talk to Matt. And I think one of us are, one of you guys should appear in front of the next county commissioner meeting to bring up this issue.
Now, we we can just talk to Matt and see, I I could call, I could talk to him and just say, okay, what's the process? Is it all three council commissioners that do it or is it just somebody's, one commissioner's doing it? But I'd want to make sure I had a candidate before I.
Right. I think we should talk to Matt first, but we have talked to him a little bit on this subject before. And I'm thinking that we might need to have go to a hearing of the commissioners. And and that might, because ultimately it is the commissioners, not the board that are making this decision, even if they don't know they're making it.
I I think also, I mean, if if there are board appointments coming up within your circle of colleagues, identifying people who are interested in public service and concerned about wildlife and and seeing if they would be interested in volunteering for this board would be a good idea.
I already talked to Mr. Gonzalez and he was interested. But I think we need to follow up.
Okay, so maybe staff, we could ask for kind of like some, can we get in touch with the commissioners or maybe our kind of meeting? The the next steps would be to try to get a more accurate read on the board makeup and when the terms are up and.
I've, I'm pretty familiar with the board.
So the existing board.
Yeah.
And how they and, you know, so he is the executive director.
Who reports to the board though? Who would they report to the board? The executive director?
Well, the board is appointed by the county commissioners and the board works like it's basically in the special district.
Yeah.
And so, and they work with the executive director on policy and decisions and so forth.
I guess I'm just trying to like put this in a way that I can think about it is like, if if there was a bunch of spikes on the Veiled Golf Course and the Veiled Rec District said, no, we want to leave the spikes that are killing the deer, what would be the way that you go about doing that? And it seems that you would talk to the board or try to get people on the board that can, that will be willing to make better decisions in easy and cheap positions in order to get rid of something that's literally spiked.
There have been citizens that have had gone to the board meeting. And I don't recall, that's been several years ago, so.
Yeah, at that point, do you vote the board out? Like, that's what happens with boards when they don't, they're not, they're not paying attention to public. I mean, I'd say like the two things that people come in here to this chamber to talk about is speeding and wildlife, you know, it's.
Well, I I I think we should start at the county level. That would be most effective. Because I think the county commissioners don't have this.
They have no idea this is, yeah, there's a line.
You know.
Yeah.
I mean, this is clearly shows, demonstrates.
I think we need to make an issue of it.
It clearly demonstrates animosity between the board and toward Mintern, so.
The county commissioners just approved five million dollars for the bighorn sheep habitat purchase. And then, you know, they're, this is where, this is important to them. They're putting their dollars behind it. And, you know, it seems that if they are where this all kind of trickles up to, that they'd be the ones to talk to, so.
On that note, can't the county commissioners essentially give the board direction? I realize they're a special district, but in light of chain of command in this case.
Well, it is different than we formally thought it was. I think the way that this functions is that the board of county commissioners is allowed to ask kind of political goal oriented questions as part of the appointment process, but that wants appointed, you know, they're they're the board of directors of that political entity and they kind of make the decisions on behalf of that board. So I I I've received some good requests for additional information. We're gonna get on this ASAP.
My concern is that either we've missed the deadline or the deadline is coming up immediately because we haven't done anything so far despite talking about it. So I. So I'm, I'm worried that we may be a little late.
What deadline?
To the party. The deadline for appointment.
Oh, for tomorrow, okay.
Yes.
I'll, I'll send an email to county manager's role tonight, and then, and then CC raise silver corn and just say, hey, are you actively accepting applications? Until when would that be? What is the process? And then we'll just get clarification there and then move from that to.
Awesome.
Next steps.
But back to your point, Mike, in regards to, once they are appointed, they're under their own autonomy. Back to the funding mechanisms, though, it's coming from countywide, correct?
I, I believe, so the Cemetery District has jurisdictional boundaries, which I think go down to Avon or maybe down to Edwards. Because this, this is the public cemetery for the eastern part of the county, yeah.
Got it. So again, you're using public funds. So it would seem there would be a realistic oversight, which in this case would be the county commission.
I, I would certainly think that the county, if they felt politically motivated to do so, could exert some indirect influence on what's going on.
To use Brian's example, you just authorized $5 million. How about you folks over there burn that 35K that you have in your coffers and get down what you were supposed to get down in spring of 23?
That's the open space.
And if, if that, if nothing else, we, you know, if we had a public hearing in front of the county commissioners, the press would probably be there and pick it up as the story, which would throw a lot more pressure on everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there, if there is an upcoming approval of a new commissioner, we should go and, I don't know that we need to show it to the public, but we could send the picture to the commissioners, at least who are voting, and say, hey, this is what, what's happening over there.
Well, I, I think we should send somebody to the meeting. And.
I'd be happy to, at least attend online.
That would be great. Do you want to back up? I'd be happy to.
Mike, I've got a, or staff question on this one. Is, is it productive to begin fining them for breaking the rules in this, in that sense?
So once we sent the nuisance letter and the time to abate the nuisance passed, a violation for a nuisance reemerges every day, and a, a potential penalty exists for every day that the nuisance isn't abated. So essentially, once we gave them notice that this needed to be corrected and then they didn't fully correct it, fines, the, the court can't order fines for each day that the nuisance is in existence.
Well, then, maybe let, build up to 35,000, we'll pay, you know, we'll pay for it.
How many days does it take to rack up $35,000 worth of fines?
I don't know, we might find out.
So we'll, we'll come back to you hopefully as in the very next meeting with answers to questions that were posed tonight.
Unless the timeline requires sooner for the open scene?
If, if we get information that something needs to happen quickly, we can disseminate that through appropriate channels.
Copy. Okay, so next is future agenda items. Does anyone have a suggestion? If you're ready to, there's only one thing left.
Well, the items we just talked about in regards to the Highlands may get added, but that's pending.
Yeah, we'll be on that anyway, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, so there's no other agenda items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who's the second? Tom, motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor?